Ms. Scott?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene from our closed session for this City of Crescent City City Council meeting for November 2nd, 2015. Call to order. There's anything to report out of closed session?
No actions were taken this evening.
All right, thank you. Can we please do roll call?
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Enscore?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Mayor Gasnow?
Here. And Councilmember Holly will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, ready, begin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, we have a pretty light agenda. We have no acknowledgements. We're gonna go to our consent calendar. On our consent calendar, we have six items. We'll start out with the approval of the regular meeting minutes from October 19th, 2015 council meeting, receive and file the warrant claims list for the October 10th, 2015 through October 23rd, 2015, receive and file the biweekly payroll report for the periods ending October 17th, 2015, paid on October 23rd, 2015, receive monthly budget to actual financial report of the city's major operating funds for the period ending September 30th, 2015, receive and file a report of cash and investments as of September 20th, 2015, and number six, consider an approved resolution number 2015-52, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City declaring the date of a special election and specifying the offices to be filled, and consider an approved resolution number 2015-53, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City requesting consolidation of the June 7th, 2016 governing council member of the City of Crescent City special election with the June 7th, 2016 statewide presidential primary election. All right, is there any public comment on our consent calendar? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the councils in a discussion. Is there any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we have no reports or presentations. We're on the communications. We are now in public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Gasnow, City Councilmembers Murray, Holly, Enscore, and Short. My name is Amy Bolander. I do reside in Crescent City, and I function as the onsite manager for the Wednesday Downtown Farmers and Artisans Market. I perform this task in close partnership with BID or the Business Improvement District. I rise tonight to speak in strong favor of BID, especially in relationship to the Wednesday market. Working with BID the past several years has resulted in vast improvements in the downtown market. With every successful market, more individuals are visiting the downtown area. Customers tell us they like the friendly cozy feeling of the market, and they return week after week for that reason. The market has become a sparkling location to come for lunch, socializing, shopping, and music by Keith Jones. Since moving from Third Street to Front Street, the number of customers has easily quadrupled, and the vendor participation has gone from six to an average of 24 vendors per week. This move to Front Street was a BID idea. This year, we had one of our most successful seasons. We did the free youth lunch program, and we were told that we were one of the most successful free lunch programs. Thanks in part to Mayor Gasnow, we did the food demonstrations from the mobile kitchen, and we did, of course, fun for the children with the Wonder Bus. The market began the EBT program last year and grew considerably this year in 2015. We were also a location this year for the Open Door Clinic RX Program for Good Health. All of the above means success, exposure, and more traffic for downtown Crescent City. By the way of the vendors' business licenses, we are also adding money to the city coffers. BID is also responsible for a variety of tasks that can easily be overlooked or taken for granted, like purchasing visible signs and flags for our market, purchasing tables and chairs thereby making the market more customer-friendly, arranging for a storage area for our flag, signs, and tables, advertising the market in both the radio and the newspaper, performing administrative tasks like collection of fees, placing numbers spaces on the vendors' spaces, and everyday problem-solving. All of these jobs, of course, are done without any remuneration. We all perform these jobs because we care about the market, and we are vested in its future. I, along with vendors and customers alike, are very concerned about the future of the market. We would prefer to remain under the auspices of BID in the current partnership that has proven to be a victory for the downtown area. This seems to us to be a very smart move. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Gasnow and City Councilmembers. My name is Pamela McCarthy, and I'm here this evening representing the VFW Post 1381 and the Auxiliary for Post 1381 to cordially invite you all to participate in the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th at 10:00 on H Street, beginning on H Street, and then to follow up with a luncheon at 12:00. This is different than what we've done in the past. We're particularly cognizant of our WWII veterans and how difficult it is for them to come back in the evening for dinner, so we're going to be trying a lunch, and we cordially invite you to attend. And we have allotted time on our program for you to speak, Mayor Gasnow, and to provide a proclamation should you choose to do so, if you don't want to, somebody else can. At any rate, we wanted to make sure that you knew that we warmly welcome you to participate in our event and honor our veterans of Del Norte County. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And giving you that information to Ms. Scott there, and it'll get to me, and then we'll talk back forth. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Mayor Gasnow, councilmembers. Grant Wirsco, Smith River Alliance. And what I'm following up on is, in September, the council did submit comments on that proposed mineral withdrawal, and I might add, 36,000 other agencies and individuals did as well supporting it. And the reason that I'm here tonight is a way to kind of get an important follow-on benefit from your comment. The proposed mineral withdrawal does not affect existing mining claims. It only affects new mining claims. So a petition has been submitted to the Oregon Water Resources Commission, and some agencies are now forwarding their comments for the mineral withdrawal to the commission, saying, "Hey, this is an issue we are concerned about, and we would like you to consider the petition that has been submitted to you, and, you know, please take our comments under consideration." Now, the petition to the Oregon Water Resources Commission seeks to ask that commission to withdraw any future water appropriations from the state of Oregon for the North Fork of the Smith River. And what that means is that it, that agency would not grant any new appropriations for water for the North Fork of the Smith. And the reason that is very important is if you have an existing mining claim, you need water to mine and to process the ore. So I'm sorry to utilize this time, you know, to bring this up to you, but I would, I guess, request that maybe your very able city manager and staff could take this matter up. I have forwarded to them some example cover letters which the Big Rock CSD and Redwood National Park already have sent to the commission, and I have copies, and I'd be happy to, I made five copies of those, and I'd be happy to, okay, Kimmy? So I defer to you about how you'd like to handle it and if I can be of further assistance, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, is there any other public comment? Seeing no other general public comment, we'll continue on with our agenda. We have no public hearings, but we do have some continuing business. Number seven, consider for approval the acceptance of 2015 COPS grant award and authorize city manager to sign, and consider for approval the memorandum of understanding between the city and Del Norte County School District for the reinstatement of the school resources officer position and authorize city manager to sign, and consider the adoption of resolution number 2015-54, resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California approving additional fiscal year 2015-16 general fund police department revenue and expense appropriations, take action as necessary. Did we have a change on that? Okay, and let's see, there's a change in that middle one there. I'll read the whole thing. Consider for approval the memorandum of understanding between the city and Del Norte County School District for the reinstatement of the school resource officer position and authorize the city manager to sign and authorize city manager and city attorney to approve the non-substantive modifications for clarification purposes as deemed necessary. Did we get that into the record?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Palazzo.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, we're gonna talk about the changes to the motion, and Chief Minzle can talk a little bit more on that. I'd like to introduce Chief Minzle to present this item.
Chief, come on now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Back in June of this year, we asked, the councils approved to allow us to apply for this grant, and October 1st, we were granted the grant. It is a three-year grant with a four-year deployment of a school resource officer. In working with the school, our Del Norte Unified School District, also here with me tonight is our superintendent, Mr. Jeff Harris, and him and I have worked together and talked about this position that has been used in the past. It's been a couple of years since we've had it. This thing will enhance school security, provide a comfort for our faculty at the schools, but more importantly, comfort for our parents and the students themselves in narcotics detection and reduction prevention and the crimes that are associated at the school, reduce school violence, and also provide a more immediate response in the event of some emergency. The funding is a partnership between our city, the school district, utilizing this COPS grants from DLJ, and working out the paperwork with our city attorney, our city manager, and our finance director. We've come up with an agreement that now Mr. Harris is going through his chain of command to approve. So that's why that addition that our mayor read about. So with that, I'll ask, answer any questions the board, the council has of us.
Are there any questions from the council? Wow, no questions. All right, I'm gonna open up the public comment, and, unless, Mr. Harris, you wanna say anything?
I'm good.
All right. Is there any public comment on this COPS grant to fund a school resource officer for the Crescent City area for the next four years? All right, seeing no public comment, we'll close up public comment, and we'll bring it back to the council.
I just wanna make a quick comment, that when I was with the school district, there were surveys that were given to parents, and privately, their major concern about the schools had to do with safety. So this is a, they're reluctant sometimes to send their kids to school. Has to do with safety. We know what the headlines look like at this time. So I think it's excellent that this COPS grant was successful, and I know the high school will be glad to have that school resource officer back. Good work.
Are there any other comments? Motion? Anybody?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2015-54, resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California approving additional fiscal year general fund expense, police department revenue, and expense appropriations for the school resource officer position.
Do we need that first paragraph that precedes that?
To authorize?
Oh, to offer, oh.
We will need all three.
All right, let me just start over then. I make a motion that we approve the acceptance of the 2015 COPS grant award and authorize the city manager to sign, and that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and Del Norte County School District for reinstatement of the school resource officer position, and authorize the city manager to sign, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to approve non-substantive modifications for clarification purposes, and that we approve Resolution 2015-54, resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California approving additional fiscal year 2015-16 general fund police department revenue, expense, and appropriations.
Do we need to make three votes on that, or just one will do?
Just one is fine.
Thank you.
Okay, well, in that case, I'll second that. I'm not going through that again.
It's all about the procedure.
That's right.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Good job, staff. Okay, we are on to our last item on the agenda, number eight here. Consider options for the Business Improvement District, BID, and the BID Advisory Board. A, adopt Resolution number 2015-55, resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City declaring its intention to suspend the activities and levy of assessments within the downtown Business Improvement District staff recommendation. B, direct staff to begin the process to dissolve the Business Improvement District, or C, take no action, take action as necessary and appropriate. So there are three options right there. Mr. Palazzo.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. This item was discussed last at the July 6th City Council meeting, where the city council took the action, consented that staff should return with steps for dissolving the Business Improvement District at the end of the farmers' market session. End of the farmers' market session, you know, it was this month. We put this back on the agenda and wanted to provide an update on where we're at. In the staff report can outline, you know, the history in the background, did an analysis on the, kind of the financial update of the farmers' market. At the time of writing the staff report, that analysis was correct. Today, we did receive the dollars that were collected or received by the Business Improvement District for the farmers' market, and we provided you an updated, you know, financial that's on the, on your deus there. It outlines how much was collected for the season. We actually outlined, you know, the last three seasons as well for you. You have to take a look at that. Overall, you know, there's really been no activity within the downtown district except for the farmers' market through the summer season. I've had, you know, a few conversations with Ms. Corstein on the phone on, you know, just, you know, if BID were to be dissolved or suspended, you know, what would happen, you know, with the existing revenue, and then also some assets that the district holds, including, you know, a large Christmas tree, kind of a farmhouse, directional signs, things like that. You know, the conclusion of staff is, you know, that's, you know, in the law with the Business Improvement District is once a district is dissolved, you know, you can do a couple of things with the dollars. You can disperse that back to the businesses within the district, or you can do some sort of project that's outlined in there and you'll plan to the council. You know, staff is recommending if you proceed down to suspension of the district is to, you know, let's figure out what a capital plan could be for the downtown area, you know, that can be used, and we can put the dollars into a capital improvement fund in order to get that project done over the next year or so. On the items, you know, the assets, you know, really don't have a solution on that one at this point, at this time. The overall suspension versus dissolution, if you dissolve it, you're removing, you know, the ordinance off the books, the tool's completely gone, it's not in the municipal code. There's a process with that, and that's, you know, adopting an ordinance, and we can go through that process, and that would be, you know, bringing that back to the city council, and you'd have, you know, two readings of the ordinance to dissolve or remove that ordinance from the books. The other solution is to suspend it, is it keeps the ordinance on the books if we ever want to reenact the district, you know, we can, the tool's there. Most likely, though, you know, we would have to do some amendments to the ordinance, which is that kind of same process, but at least we would have a foundation to where to start. So staff's recommending a suspension at this time. The council, you know, can discuss, and even including your recommendation, you know, how long you wanna suspend it, or how long before we bring it back to, you know, the council for a further discussion on whether or not we wanna reenact the downtown district at some point. So, you know, those are the options tonight, you know. The suspension process would be just like the adoption processes we do a, or the adoption process that you do on an annual basis for assessing the district. Let's, you know, we would adopt a resolution of intent, that resolution would be sent to the businesses, published in the newspaper, come back to the December 7th meeting, you know, for final adoption. The other item that I think I want to address, and we've discussed this among staff, and that's the farmers' market and kind of what happens with the farmers' market, you know, it, you know, has some traction, you know, as, you know, a lot of people that attend that farmers' market on Wednesdays, it's a, it's a nice event. You don't need to be a Business Improvement District or have a Business Improvement District to run a farmers' market. You know, the group can get together and they can create their own, you know, organization, 501(c)(3) or something to that nature, and they can operate a farmers' market. Would certainly like to work with any organization that stepped forward, you know, to operate a farmers' market and work with them to keep that, you know, alive and moving. And I think any activity that happens, you know, in our town, staff has always been there to work with those organizations to make it happen, because, you know, any activity's very positive for our visitors and residents. Any questions of staff?
I have a few. So the suspension, that, could, could you have a Business Improvement District function while it was suspended?
No. No, that would be, it'd be basically, you haven't, you wouldn't take any action to enact, you know, a board, maybe suspend it, and kind of puts it in limbo, I guess, is good terminology, Martha?
Yeah, the ordinance would still be on the books, but we wouldn't have, you wouldn't, the city wouldn't have a, wouldn't be actively appointing a board, and the activities and the assessments would all be suspended, basically, no, no action taken on them during that period.
So we still, we couldn't have the farmers' market operated?
Not by the BID.
Not by the BID. Because it seems kind of silly. I mean, we have a bazillion 501(c)(3)'s in this community already to form another one for the farmers' market, and that, that's one thing that I think that was really a good outcome from BID, so that's why I was wondering about that.
It is a good outcome. The, I think we've gotten into this process, so in order to have a Business Improvement District, you need to do a resolution of intention, you have to assess, you do assessments, you know, to the businesses.
I understand that.
And we haven't been doing that. So it's not really, you know, a Business Improvement District by just running a farmers' market, it's a farmers' market, so let's, you know, shift it into an organization that's just a farmers' market, would, would be staff's recommendation.
Okay. And then I do have one big concern, when you were saying in your report that the farmers' market wasn't providing the funds to the city for the farmers' market, do we have policies and procedures on how often that they were supposed to be, written policies and procedures on how often they were supposed to be providing?
No, we don't. And, you know, we were, you know, I guess in years past, we would receive the funds, you know, a little bit more frequently, you know, and that's the booth rental spaces, is my understanding. Throughout the whole summer, we hadn't received anything, and there's several conversations that went back and forth. You know, it was certainly, you know, our, as staff, I felt it important to report out to the council, the writing in staff report, you know, what the status was for, for those funds, and I outlined that in the staff report. That has changed. They came in and deposited the funds.
I understand that. I was just thinking that if we would've had a clear policy and procedure on the process for turning in the funds, like after every farmers' market on Tuesday, or Thursday or Friday, by no later than Friday, then there wouldn't have been an issue. So it wouldn't have been, I mean, 'cause the people that run BID also are trying to do their businesses, and then we have all the different entities that contribute to the farmers' market, so maybe things just got a little hectic and carried away. So it's not like they...
That's understandable, absolutely. And I think it's, you know, our lesson, and we'll try and put more policies in place.
Because I don't want the farmers' market to look bad, because they just weren't giving us less than $2,000, so. Those are my questions right now.
Mr. Palazzo, would it, would it require that a 501(c)(3) be organized to, to run it, or could somebody form a association, a group association, that wouldn't be so formal like a 501(c)(3)? It's kind of a headache to get a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, I'd have misread, maybe I'd answer that question. I don't believe you need a 501(c)(3) to run it. It's, you know, how your organization is set up, you know, the RHS runs, you know, the Saturday market, I'm not sure how they're set up. Certainly could be, you know, a part of that. I think they were, you know, had some interest. I think there's other organizations that were looking at this, and, you know, there're other possibilities out there. Anything to add on that?
I don't, a 501(c)(3) is probably one of the more common types of organizations. If you're gonna start something new, it's definitely not the, the only type of organization that could put on something like this.
I'd just like to say, we've already acknowledged that there's a lot of active 501(c)(3) organizations in the community, and many of them serve multiple programs. So perhaps somebody like that will want to step in, and they already have the insurance and the, the accounting principles down for operating something like this, so I don't know where this would go, but it sounds like there'll, there'll be a home for the farmers' market in the future to me.
With the exception that we, we just heard from Amy that said that they would like to not have it be, well, they, they would prefer to have it be run by BID, so that was, you know, she's, she's the one that's been running it. So that was, you know, she's, she's the one that's been running it without any compensation all for the last, how many years? Three years, so, I don't know. Anyway, I'm just saying, just mentioned, yeah, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Palazzo?
Mr. Palazzo, you said if the council were to look at suspending, suspension, you mentioned that there would require some amendments if we were to kick it back and go off again. Would you mind expanding on that? What kind of amendments would be necessary? Is it a whole new process that we'd be looking at?
Maybe turn to Ms. Rice on some of that. But, you know, our code on the ordinance that we have in place currently, we've, you know, had several amendments in the past couple of years, you know, in that. And I'd have to go back to see what specifically those amendments are. Things change if you pick this up in five years. You know, my guess is that we would have to take a look at that code and take a look at, you know, amendments to that code.
I guess a little, where I'm leaning with the question is would, would it be tougher to do that than dissolve the bid and recreate the bid at a later time?
I don't think that the amendments that are needed in the code are not necessarily difficult. I mean, the biggest one that stands out to me is that our code assumes that a 501(c)(3) nonprofit would be organized to run the bid, which has never happened. So since its very inception, we're working with a code that doesn't exactly match what's going on. So my recommendation, if this were to start up again, would make the code match the city's design for the Business Improvement District. That's not anything extremely complex.
Thank you.
Thank you for the example. I couldn't pull it out of my head. Go ahead.
Mr. Palazzo, I just have one more question. When we talk about Resolution 2015-55, which basically outlines altogether what, what you have said.
Fifty-three, fifty?
Fifty, two fif, two what? 2015-55. That...
Fifty-five is a bit...
Says fifty-three in the, in the heading. Says fifty-five on the resolution.
Says fifty-five on the resolution.
We need the...
And I'm reading the resolution.
Yes.
But we're, we're talking about the same resolution.
We are.
As, as I understand it, it's, I think it's a really well-written resolution. The last paragraph on the resolution, though, speaks to the public hearing that would be held on Pearl Harbor Day on, on December 7th. And so that would be an opportunity if there were a groundswell of support for bid. That groundswell could cut, there'd be one more bite of the apple, I suppose, after we, after we complete this, if we complete this process as recommended by staff. There's another opportunity there.
Yes, there would be.
All right, thank you.
And Mayor Nitt have asked the Ms. Scott City Clerk to verify the number for the resolution on what was published in the staff report versus the...
Yeah, I have fifty-five here on my agenda.
The number in the agenda, I believe, is the correct number.
Twenty-five, fifteen dash five-five.
Correct.
Back, it says fifty-five-two on the actual resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for Ms. Palazzo?
Before I open this up in the public comment, I would like President, current President of Bid to come up and make any comments if she wishes to.
Thank you, Mayor Gastinow and council. As you've seen by the resolution, it is a good option and we, as the bid, would certainly support that over dissolution. Dissolution would take the tool out of the toolbox completely. The type of bid that you have in Delmar, in Crescent City can never be created. It was created under state law and in 93 that law changed. So that would be one reason to retain it and work on amendments versus dissolution. The other problem with dissolution is that any assets and funds that we have have to be dispersed back to the businesses in the Business Improvement District. Part of the reason that the funds were held for Farmer's Market is if that was the direction council was going to go, our board wanted to vote to refund fees for this year for Farmer's Market people. Since most of the fees we've collected since 2013, almost all the money we have in our fund is from Farmer's Market fees. We feel that they should go to the people who are running the market and actively doing that. We did present you with a letter asking that we would like to stay on in a very small, limited capacity instead of doing either of the other actions, just around the market, give it a couple of years. We spent the summer trying to find another nonprofit 501(c)(3) to take over. I know the RHS has expressed interest, but some of the other groups we've contacted haven't. Another thought we had had was possibly taking the funds and using it as a nest egg to form a new 501(c)(3) to take on the market. But apparently that may not be allowed by state law. Anyway, we do appreciate your time. We appreciate your consideration. We would be willing, as we said in our letter, to stay on and run the market. It is successful. We think that there is going to be a change in business climate at some time and we would hope that the future would look brighter. Thank you.
Do you want to answer any questions?
No, I want to get out of here.
Yeah, I know you do. Any questions for Ms. Korbsting? President, current President of the Business Improvement District? Okay, thank you very much. Now, I will open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this issue of the Business Improvement District? Please, come on.
Do you guys know me?
Oh, please go ahead and state your name.
I'm Diana Tomasini. I just wanted to say as a business owner, we have a very complex, I have a very complex thing. We own a lot of property in your city and my family and I live outside of the city limits. We can't elect any of you. I find that in running a business, and I don't want to be misinterpreted about the Farmer's Market. I think a Farmer's Market is fine. I don't care if you would set it up next, right next door to my building. I just don't feel that it is the business improvement's obligation to run that. I don't see how that helps to create businesses coming into our community and wanting to invest in our community and open up. It's, it's tough to do business in this town for a lot of reasons. I think some of it is we have Oregon right up the road that has no sales tax. We have gas up the road that is much cheaper. It's, it's like it's another, I, I don't even know that I feel that it's really a Farmer's Market. They're selling a lot of the same stuff that we are selling in our stores, you know, clothing and food in our restaurants and all of that. I don't care that they're doing that, but I just don't think that my money, I pay a business license. I pay sales tax to you. I sell, pay property tax to you guys. And I just think that it needs to be dissolved. And, you know, maybe when I die tomorrow, you can reopen it and hopefully it's not a lot of paperwork to get it up and going again. But right now, we don't have any businesses. We have very few businesses in this block area that somebody's decided was going to be the Business Improvement District. It's very tough and most of the people I, we've got empty and vacant places in our building that we're trying to rent out. And it's kind of like, why would I do that when I could step out a block and it's one less fee I have to pay? It's just, all of it is really, really difficult. So I'd like you to really think about it deeply, realize that we're not the enemy. The majority of the people in the bid district don't want it. Now, maybe, you know, maybe 15 years ago was a better idea, but it's not right now. The economy is pretty tough. Sales are tough. We're all struggling to stay in business and we're losing them. You know, we lost Sherri Weir and I, that was a big hurt to Crescent City. I don't think everybody's realized it yet, but that's going to be a big disaster, I think, for downtown. That's a sad loss for all of us. I thank you for your time. I hope you consider some of the things I've said and thanks again for your time.
Thank you. So any other public comment? Okay. Wait, okay, we have public comment. You had to wait till the very last second, didn't you?
Well, I really wasn't here to speak, but Mayor Gastinow, council member Short, M. Score.
You're going to state your name, sir?
Oh, why? Ron Phillips. And I live in the county and I run the Farmer's Market in the county. And I want to commend Amy for the hard work that she's put in in establishing the downtown Farmer's Market. One of the things that has helped the Saturday Market along with the Wednesday Market has been the addition of several food vendors. I can't say that I took all the credit for the building of the Farmer's Market on Saturday without those folks that are coming. You don't have the advantage of, on the Wednesday Market, of having the people from the bakery and Rookings. But if you've ever been to my market, you know that there's a line the minute they get there. And the same thing with a couple of other vendors. So I think that's great. I think it's great for the downtown. I think what she's done has been great for the downtown. I know that with the RX program, she's taken money out of her pocket to pay back the vendors and sometimes that could run as much as $200 or $300. That went back to the produce vendors just from that program. So I think it's a great thing. I don't want to get into how you deal with bid or anything else. Just to clarify, one thing, AB 1871 was passed and signed by the governor in the beginning of the year, which states that a Farmer's Market can be run by a 501(c)(3). It could be run by a city or county and it can also be run by a couple of farmers. So there is a way of doing it. And I, it goes on to name a few others, but, and then, as you know, we've been sort of, not a certified Farmer's Market this year because the law also states that we can't have farmers outside of California. And I chose and Amy chose to, along with our ag director's permission, there was a little line in the direct marketing law that allowed us to say that the farmers, even though they had to be certified, they could go wherever they wanted and sell. And we use that line and we still have our senator working on it as if those that were at the meeting the other night know that he is trying to come up with some solution that we maybe will put a mileage no further away than 100 miles or something that we could continue to have the farmers from Oregon because they can bring us stuff earlier that we can't grow here, you know, in June or July that they can. So that's the only comment I have. I didn't want to, I don't want to comment on anything with the bid. And, you know, I don't want to see the downtown go away. I mean, and RHS was brought up and yes, we could look at that. I've had the, one of my board members sitting over there and the board has given me permission to look into whatever it takes and report back to them. So it would be a board decision of RHS, but, okay?
All right, thank you, sir. Put your own. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, a closed public comment, it comes back to the council to make a decision. Anybody want to go first? Discussion? Motion?
Well, I think maybe a little bit of discussion before a motion. I've taken this very seriously every time this has come before us. And I know the hard work that the bid people do and I acknowledge all that hard work and, and the city's better for it. But I also looked through the old surveys. I know it's old information. I think most of it was 2011, but it was pretty clear that the majority of the, of the business owners, maybe 120 businesses, were, were not supportive of bid for whatever reason. And I have to add that at the last time we considered this, I think it was in July, none of the 120 businesses had done the voluntary assessment and now to find one step forward and paid the assessment, one out of 120. So to me, that's also indicative of, of a lack of support. So I, I also don't want to continue to utilize staff time for something that, that, that doesn't seem to have the support of the business owners. And it's one of those opportunities that we have. So often we go to the, to the ratepayers and to the taxpayers and we ask for more. This is one time where we have the option to pull back. So with that, I, I think I'm going to be looking seriously at, at Resolution Number 2015-55.
I agree with almost everything that Mr. Hawley just said. There's, there's a couple of concerns that I have. One is, is that the, the tool itself is a very valuable tool, the, the bid tool. And I, I think that, that it would be short-sighted to simply dissolve bid. Because to re-establish under the 93 law, we're going to be talking about a, a much smaller and a much shorter time period. Really, it's going to be a project-based type of organization which really might not ever meet our real needs. My guess is if we dissolve, there will never, ever be a bid again, probably. There may not be anyway. That's the option that suspension gives us, is to, to step back and say, for whatever reason that this is not working, let's, let's put this aside. I agree especially about the staff time that's been involved in this. I would say that I think that one of the mistakes that we may have made as, as a council is to, to stop the mandatory assessments. Once we started down that road, we, we kind of created this for ourselves. If we really felt strongly as a council that bid ought to be bid, then we ought to have assessed all the business owners and said, sorry, this is the way it is. But we, we didn't do that. And I think, I think we had good intentions, hoping that, that that would provide an opportunity for the community and the business owners to say, hey, we're behind this. Let's, let's all work together. So I think that we, we take some of the responsibility for that. The other thing is, is Mr. Palazzo made reference to maybe identifying a timeframe. If, if we suspend this, I would certainly be in favor of defining a certain measure of time before we bring it back and start talking about it again. I don't want to come back and talk, if we, if we go that route, I don't want to talk about this next year. We need real time to, to stop and let it go away. And then it really needs to come back with a, with fresh eyes. And I don't think you can do that with a season like that. So that's just kind of my two cents worth, I guess.
I want to thank the people on the bid board who have done so much work and everybody else who has supported bid. I personally feel that bid has done some very positive things for the community. I know others disagree with that and they have the, the right to disagree, of course. However, I, I feel that it is a valuable tool. I think that we shouldn't lose that tool. So I think the suspension is a good idea. And I really want to see the Farmer's Market stay. There are Farmer's Markets throughout the nation that are thriving that do not harm the local businesses in, in that particular area. There's a small one in Henderson Center. There's a huge one in Arcata Plaza that doesn't harm the businesses. So they're, they can be complimentary to the businesses. And I think the one that we have here in our downtown has been complimentary. We don't have very many restaurants in the downtown business area. So to have a few hours on a Wednesday with some food is not a huge chunk out of competition. And the competition is good. That's what capitalism is about. So the other items that they sell, those are valuable items too. The jewelry and the other notions, the soaps and things like that. That's, that's part of capitalism. And pop-up businesses, which is a new and growing part of our economy, is what Farmer's Markets are starting to become. And they can expand to become longer-term businesses full year-round in other places. So those are kind of incubator businesses that are starting to testing ground in our Farmer's Market. So we want to support that, I think, in, in terms of a part of an economic development tool as well. And I think that they're very valuable and I appreciate them taking the risk to, to start their businesses at our Farmer's Market and I thank them for being there too. So that's my position on that.
Seems like all the discussion comments that I've heard was if bid goes, what, would that be a danger to our Farmer's Market? And I think the evidence here is that, no, it's, it's, if, if the bid was not here, then the Farmer's Market would still survive just fine. So that being said, acting with a note of caution and, and taking staff's recommendation and suspending it. in suspending, I believe would, would be the way to go. But defining, agreeing with Councilman Inzcor that we need to define a timeframe, a relatively significant one, I think would be a wise choice also.
I agree with most everything you guys say. Exactly. I know, and, you know, I feel for my friends who've been on the bid board. I've been on the bid board myself and I know others have been on the bid board and all the work that they put into it. You know, sometimes lots of thankless hours of, of being out there, weeding the parade routes, doing events, making sure everything works and helping to make sure that downtown is a very inviting place. And I salute you and I thank you for all your work, but I do understand that we need a rest for the Business Improvement District, not a dissolution, but a suspension. And I would say, you know, four years at least, I don't know. You know, that's a hard one. When it comes back and, you know, put it out for a couple of years and then if the businesses want it back, they will start talking to the council and staff and then we just bring it back up again. So, yeah, not bring it back next year, not bring it back the year after that, but give it a good three to four years. So I will entertain a motion with any time restrictions or stipulations on.
I'll, I'll do it. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2015-55, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City declaring its intention to suspend the activities and the levy of assessments within the Downtown Business Improvement District. Mrs. Rice, do I need to read the entire resolution?
No, but if you'd like to stipulate a timeframe, that would be amending paragraph one.
And I would, I would make the amendment that we not revisit any attempts to reinstitute bid for a minimum of three years.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley.
Yes.
Councilmember Inzcor.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Mayor Gastinow.
Yes, and thank you for your service. That does pass unanimously. We are suspending the bid for at least three years. No discussion. Okay, that takes us off of all our agendized items. We have no new business. We are at the City Council items now. We have legislated matters. Is there any legislative matters?
I do not have any legislative matters.
All right. No other ones? No? Okay, City Manager Report.
I do have two things to report out and, and I guess, I guess some direction from the City Council. We got contacted by...
Bevno?
Yes, and I'm trying to get the, the exact name of the organization and highlight it on my list here. It's the Crescent City Port Search and Rescue Authority at the harbor and they have, I think, a meeting on a quarterly basis. They represent County Harbor, City Sheriff, Coast Guard, Coast Guard Auxiliary, Guard and Communications Emergency Response and they have an upcoming meeting, I believe it's this week.
Number four, I believe.
Yeah, Councilmember Anea, who's resigned from the council, was our appointed member, so we'd like to see if we can get a member appointed to that, for that meeting.
Great, and that's the mayor's discretion. So I briefly talked with Councilmember Short about this and I was wondering if you'd like to take on the responsibility for that.
Certainly.
Okay, so we are going to appoint.
Okay, we will get, we'll email you that information. They have an agenda that's out and get that out to you. And then the second item is we're contacted by the, the county and they would like to have a two-by-two with the council. And again, did not expect to have a county ad hoc two-by-two meeting and Mr. Anea was our member along with Mayor Gastinow on that. So I'd like to see if we can, the next couple of weeks, have a meeting with the county and have another council member join us with that.
Yes, I would like to continue that with myself and I wondered if Councilmember Inzcor would join me.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, so there we go with that one.
And I will coordinate that with Ms. Scott and we'll get you some dates on that one.
Great, thank you. Remember, you know, make it difficult for them because I still got school.
It'll be at, at 3:30 or thereafter.
Thank you. During my lunch, my lunch delay.
So I do not have anything else to report out at this time.
All right, thank you very much. Then we're on to reports, concerns, referrals. Any council members? Who would like to go first? Anybody having any report? It was, you know, a couple of weeks.
I'll go.
All right, Mr. Inzcor.
Since our last council meeting, I attended a visitor bureau meeting, Redwood Coast Transit meeting, Chamber Board, Executive Board meeting. Had a couple of meetings that were canceled. Our LAFCO and our Tri-Aid C meetings were canceled last week. Did attend the Senator McGuire's Town Hall and that was very, very informative. Mr. Mayor did a fantastic job with his PowerPoint. He had to go a little too fast, I think, but did a great job with that. And I, I, I gave blood last Friday for the KCRE blood drive. I have never given blood before, not for any reason not to. I just had never, nobody had ever said, hey, you want to come and give blood? And so at our chamber meeting, I was yelted into filling a spot and so I was glad to, to participate in that. I think that's all I got.
Thank you.
Mr. Short. Mr. Mayor, I'm just continuing with my City of Crescent City education program.
That's pretty good. I like, I like...
I'm meeting with Mr. Ludeman there with the IT Department of the city and Chief Mensal. Got to applaud him for the things he's doing at this city police department. Met with Matt down at the, the city pool, got the tour and the rundown there. Met with Eric and Tom down at the wastewater treatment facility. Learned a lot that day. Learned a lot. Thank you, Eric. Today, I met with Megan down at the Housing Authority. Very impressive little office she's running there. My most important meeting was yesterday. It was my mom and dad's 50th wedding anniversary. I wanted to say, congratulations, David and Ellen Short.
Definitely, definitely. All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Murray.
Thank you. Let's see, on the 22nd, I participated in an hour-long webinar in preparation for the city counties, coastal cities, counties, coastal commission meeting that I will be attending on Friday. And then I too attended Senator McGuire's Town Hall meeting. Was very informative, which we even had Mr. Harris there from the school district. They hosted at Joe Hamilton and it was a packed house and there were representatives from every entity in the, in the county. So I think that everyone learned a lot about what's happening and that was a really good event. And you were a shining star with your PowerPoint and we were very, very proud of the city and you, Mr. Mayor. And then I finally got to go back to the library the next day, which was very exciting that they're reopened, so that was, that was really good. And then on Friday, I attended a training at the Delnar Unified School District, so I thank you again for inviting. Megan Miller and I both attended that and it was very informative on, on working with youth and setting healthy boundaries and learning how to work with them in a much more positive and healthy manner and so that was really informative. And then Saturday was the last farmers market of the season and Mr. Phillips isn't here, but I really appreciated him telling us about the, that other caveat in AB 1871 where farmers, local farmers can help run their own farmers market. So that was really a good information for us for our, our downtown farmers market. But it was not as big of a turnout, but it was still fun going to the farmers market and then, of course, that was the trick-or-treaters that got rained on later on during the day and that's my report.
Mr. Hawley. Thank you. Thank you. Solid Waste Management Authority met on the 20th. We went over a new, a revised code of ethics and we adopted that and we set up the schedule to interview and select a new public member in case, some of you hadn't heard, Angela Glor had to resign due to new employment and we are electing a public member for the Solid Waste Management Authority. And that will actually, actually then when we do select one, that will come back before this council for approval as well.
Yeah, come join us, it's really fun.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you could, welcome to that. Week from tomorrow, we'll be doing that in a special meeting. The, on the, on the 22nd, had a senior center board meeting where we, we continued to, to work, rework and rework the budget. But there has, have been CDBG funds allocated to the senior center, which is making it much easier, a little breathing room for us and we can improve some services there. On the 23rd, there was a, an Oktoberfest dance at the Elks Lodge, which was pretty well-attended and tsunami swing played and it was, it was a great little piece of Americana, so it was, it was a fun time. The, there's been two meetings of the, of the senior center personnel committee, of which I'm the chair. We're still trying to piece together a brand-new personnel policy and it should be done in a couple more meetings. I did meet with Mr. Gastinow as the audit committee for the council and we met with Mr. Bedawi and he did a great overview of, of the, what he was hoping to accomplish with the audit and we're looking forward to those results. Did attend the, at least part of the, the Town Hall meeting with Senator McGuire. And I just have to say, finally, that this is the best place for Halloween because of the trick-or-treat, treaters that come. A lot of communities can't even do that anymore and I think even with the rain, we must have had 200 trick-or-treaters. And it was good to see Kimmy there. She was actively involved with getting wet and, and getting candy at the same time. So that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was thinking I didn't have much going on this last time, but I, Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, maybe I, you know, I blank it out of my brain after we're done with it or something, I don't know. I had a Redwood Transit Authority meeting the next day and definitely had the city audit meeting there on the 26th. And then, of course, the Senator McGuire Town Hall, which I have to give all the credit to the staff because I just tell them, just give me a script and, you know, some pictures and I just go off and so, get it done and, and it was a good thing. And, you know, I made that horrible joke, which made the quote in the paper about, you know, hope nothing happens because we got everybody here and like, it was just a memory back from one of the, never mind. I should have said...
I'm making it better.
Yeah, no, I'm not making it better. I should have said, hey, this is your chance if we have another Town Hall. No, don't, no, I'm not going there. If, if you need to contact one of your elected officials, this is the place to do it. This is the place to time.
It's like, contact us.
That's right. You got a lot of FaceTime there. So it's, it's a good thing. Make sure you make the Town Hall meetings because all the elected officials will be there, safe and sound because we have the chief there watching over us. Thanks, chief. And so, so that's, that's it. And it was a good Halloween. I didn't light up the house too much, so I probably got 100, you know, our neighborhood's starting to, you know, we pell in comparison with Washington Park, so it's, it's a little tough for us. But I do have a lot of candy left over, that's for sure. Always buy candy that you like if you're doing Halloween.
What are you locked up?
Yeah. So, so with that, with that great report, we will go to, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is coming up on November 16th, 2015. We'll see you all there. Thank you very much.